Four. The time is now five oh four. Good evening and welcome to the April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five Policy and Governance Committee Meeting. I am Dr. Felton Moss, Committee Chair and District Seven Board Member. It brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, and I look forward to our work tonight. For those unable to observe now, the meeting is being recorded and can be assessed on the PGCPS YouTube channel for later viewing. Ms. Adelaide, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Moss?
President.
Mr. Briggs?
Present.
Ms. Buddhist Strather?
Present.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Chair Jackson. We got four present.
Will the quorum, President, the Policy and Governance Committee will come to order. Also want to remind those who are unable to observe the meeting, the meeting is being recorded and can be assessed on the PGCPS YouTube channel for later viewing. Looks like we have a quorum tonight. The chair wants to inform the public that the agenda for this meeting will vary slightly to accommodate our visiting speakers. Agenda after Agenda two point one Public Comments, the committee will consider Agenda Item four point three Policy zero one two three Artificial Intelligence, and then Agenda Item four point one Policy thirty three twenty three Purchasing. If there are no objections, the committee shall adopt the April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five Meeting Agenda as amended. Are there any objections tonight? There being no objections, the April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five Meeting Agenda is adopted as amended. Let's do approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to the meeting that to the meetings from March twenty fifth, April first, April ninth meeting minutes as distributed, the committee shall approve those. Does someone have any corrections to any of those meeting minutes? Okay, there being no corrections, the minutes are approved. Let's move to public comments. Tonight, it also looks like we don't have any public comments. They can be live written or pre-recorded using video or audio. We will now consider Agenda Items four point three and four point one. Each member will have two rounds per item during the discussion, and each round will be two point five minutes. It looks like we have colleagues here who are not on the committee tonight. If you do have questions, certainly let me know. You are welcome to engage. But certainly let me know, but those will take place after the official committee members are on, but I have no objections to any of you engaging in whatever way. And as many rounds as we get, we'll give them to you as well unless the committee members object in any way. But excited to have you all with us. We'll start with Policy zero one two three Artificial Intelligence. Want to also remind the administration, given the interest of time, be mindful of our time with our presentations tonight, but we'll start with Policy zero one two three. That is weird. Zero one two three Artificial Intelligence. Ms. Welsh, the floor is now yours.
Good evening, everyone. So with artificial intelligence, this policy was a new policy as of last year, but because the topic of artificial intelligence was a new topic in the world, it's not new, but it was new in the world of thinking about putting a policy together on artificial intelligence. And actually, we were probably one of the first school systems in the country that put a policy together. There were a lot of things that we thought we knew, but we didn't know if we really knew. And so we, to our best guests and all the research I'm with Dr. Zuckerman's team, we really put together what we thought was the best that we could put into that policy. But we ended up putting language in the policy last year, which said that there would be a super tense task force, an AI work group basically, that would be working with a variety of people to really start looking at long term professional application and instructional guidance regarding AI. And so that is why Dr. Dr. Zuckerman is here with members of his team, and I believe Dr. White might be here also. I haven't had a chance to look at all of this, yes. And so that they are planning to share what they have found and what they've been doing this past years to help us with this policy. So, Dr. Zuckerman, I'll let you start and do introductions to everyone that will be presenting, and then you can move forward with the presentation.
A quick question, Ms. Welsh, do we have two separate presentations tonight? What's happening here? Is one person presenting?
There's one presentation related to AI.
Okay.
And then, okay.
Yeah, I'll share if it's okay. I'll share my screen in just a minute. So Andy Zuckerman, Head of Technology, and with me is Dr. Judith White, our Chief Academic Officer, and Ms. Kim Robertson, our Director of Technology Integration and Support. As Ms. Ms. Welsh said, we have, Dr. White and I are are co-leaders in the system for AI. I don't want it to anyone to think this is just an IT initiative or just an academics initiative. We've really been attached at the hip from day one on this. And so I'll talk, we're gonna be as brief as we can. I've cut this presentation down to small number of slides. We'll go through it quickly, give a chance for everyone to ask some questions. And so with that, I'm gonna share my screen and just give me one second. And we should be good. Everybody should be able to see it. We good? Okay. All right. So again, thank you for the opportunity here. Our presentation, Navigating the Future: Thoughtful AI Integration in School Systems, really speaks to just the evolving nature of AI. And I think as Ms. Welsh said, I do believe Prince George's County Public Schools has been and remains in the vanguard of AI in public education. And so what we've been focused on for the last really two years now, engaging stakeholders, prioritizing ethical use and data and privacy, building capacity and expertise in the system, and exploring curriculum resources and learning hubs. And we'll get into each of these just very briefly. On the engaging stakeholders front, I do just want to flag that we have an AI work group. As Ms. Welsh said, that's what the board policy speaks to. It is consists of team members from Dr. White's team, our Chief of Schools Office, as well as our team in the IT Division. We do meet every other week. We have are just continuing to review our data, the research, the pilots that we have in place that we'll talk about in just a minute, with a real emphasis on these critical areas. In addition, Ms. Robertson does lead our Technology Advisory Committee, which meets several times a year, where AI has been a topic that includes parents and teachers, principals, and students. And so you can imagine what a hot topic AI has been. Let me just jump to the next slide here. So why AI? I mean, I think we all are pretty clear about the why behind AI. Just it's it's really just been a revolution over the last couple of years, ever since really Chat GPT in November of twenty twenty two, I believe, launched. That really just transformed the space and just specifically the notion of generative AI. And so at a very early period in just AI and education, we launched a partnership with a nonprofit called AIEDU. In June of twenty three, we signed an MOU with them. And that really was fairly transformative for us because it positioned us to have an external partner who is a subject matter expert in the use and implementation of AI in school systems to help us shape policy, our procedures, our processes, and just and our learning. And so we know that everyone is using AI these days, and our interest is using it thoughtfully, intelligently, and with integrity and equitably. And so these are just key areas that have driven our work as we've engaged in it. And so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Robertson first. Sorry, Dr. White, I had the order a little bit wrong. I'm gonna turn to Ms. Robertson first, just to talk a little bit about what we've been doing in these areas over the last two years, and then we'll come back with with Dr. White and me to finish up the presentation. So, Kim?
Yes. So as you can see, our year zero was our learning year last year, and this is our year one. So last year's are related to engaging stakeholders. We conducted a survey across the district to find out what the current posture was for AI use within or people's literacy around AI. Additionally, as Dr. Zuckerman mentioned, we have engaged with various stakeholders to help us identify policy, identify particular strategies that are specific to pre-K twelve. And in a later slide, you will see some of who those those stakeholders were that we engaged with. Additionally, as Dr. Zuckerman mentioned, as part of the Technology Advisory Committee, which is staffed with or is voluntary with community members, also our parents and a student who is a part of that committee. We share essentially what our direction is or what our roadmap is as it relates to AI and gather their feedback in terms of where they think we should go, what questions they may have to ensure that it shapes the communication that we share across our district. So within that, we have developed essentially a framework that kind of guided our our steps as it relates to AI. So again, last year was zero. This is year one. And in year one, we have focused primarily on staff and building capacity at the staff level. And I'll talk more about that when we talk about exploring strategies and learning labs. As it relates to enacting ethics, here is where we focus specifically on the use of particular tools and viewing privacy policies to ensure that the policies that we or the the tools that we engage with with our students were actually safe and that students could use them typically at thirteen and up or eighteen and up. So within the enacting ethics space, we also looked at a way to vet particular tools that we may consider for use in our district. So we do have a vetting process in place. And people can or staff members can submit tools for us to review before it is considered approved. So again, at the staff level, this is where we are with enacting ethics. Building capacity and awareness has been around professional learning and the focus on professional learning and understanding what AI literacy is across our district. We initially engaged with AIEDU to host a summer professional development where teachers, not just in Prince George's County, but teachers in our local area or staff in our local area were able to come and kind of get a better understanding of what AI literacy is. And then during the course of the year, we offer various various professional learning opportunities for teachers and staff to understand not just literacy, but understanding how to create prompts to gather the best data. They also are learning how to engage students with AI more correctly, ensuring that no PII or personally identifiable information is used in any AI tool. And then lastly, as we relate to exploring strategies and learning labs, both the Division of Information Technology as well as the Division of Academics host what we consider our learning labs. We we they are innovation projects where we focus on innovative ideas with staff or with with central office team members as well to consider what AI looks like in 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 academics as well as within IT.
Chief Zuckerman and Chief White, we'll give you all some additional time to talk to finish the rest of your presentation.
Okay. Let me see if we can expedite this. So I'm gonna kick it to Dr. White in just a second. Just as we as we've gone through this process for the last two years, our focus, as I mentioned earlier, is it safe? Is it equitable? Does it support innovation? And is it intentional? That's been our, those have been the four guiding principles. We've looked at AI tools, which we have a bunch in place now, and we'll get to that in just a second. On our website, you'll be able to see just our AI implementation framework and roadmap for the district, and I definitely encourage everyone to check that out. One of the things you'll find, for example, are AI tool guidelines for educators that our team has pushed out. We are constantly receiving requests, as you might imagine, from staff members all over the district about using this tool or that tool. And so we wanted to build everyone's awareness around when we're looking at tools, what are the things that we should be looking for with respect to privacy and safety and integrity? Dr. White's team has done a phenomenal job prioritizing AI literacy, and I'm gonna ask her just to speak to that briefly before we close things out.
Sure, I would just add to the conversation that when you think about things that we may do from a systemic standpoint, it's always gonna be aligned to us picking tools that deal with the concerns or areas in the curriculum that we want to promote. So for example, if writing is an area that we want to promote, then we're gonna look for AI tools that do that. From a systemic perspective, we're not gonna say, oh, this tool is amazing. Let's just use it. It has to be tied to a standard or a need that we have in a district. But to Chief Zuckerman's point, we know that our teachers and our students are in AI all the time. So our responsibility also around AI literacy is how you'll hear teachers say, well, I don't want them using Chat GPT because then if they know how to write, like, what's the point? So then that's where we work to teach them, how do you use it in a responsible way? Where you're teaching students what's plagiarism, what's their own work, or how do you teach a teacher how to prompt using it to get a outline? And then how do you maybe change your pedagogy in your writing in class to get to that final project? So that becomes with the literacy. How do we train teachers and how do we train students to be responsible? And how to use it when they're building lessons? And how do we make sure that it's making sense against the standards that we have in place?
Thanks, Dr. White. And so just through this process, we've we've developed a number of critical partnerships. As I mentioned at the beginning, AIEDU has been instrumental in just that relationship that we have because that's provided these really strong professional learning opportunities for different stakeholder groups. We have a relationship with a group called Advanced Learning Partnerships through our work with Dell. Dell Corporation that provides has provided us guidance for crafting policy, professional learning. We have a partnership with a tool and a product and a company called Brisk AI, which is supporting implementation of ethical use of generative AI with teachers and centralized teams. So this is areas like lesson planning and unit planning and trying to make the work of teaching more efficient, not to replace the teacher, I want to clarify, and not to teach students directly, but to help teachers behind the scenes with all that goes into being a strong teacher. We partnered with the Harvard Graduate School of Education last year, and we had four doctoral students who worked with us and wrote a really robust doctoral paper on ethical implementation of AI that that they have published and were featured in that. And finally, this year, we partnered with Khan Academy to provide licenses to Khan Mego, Khan Academy's virtual tutoring assistant for all of our ninth graders plus select students in different courses at high school just to continue to expand the use of a safe and equitable use of AI in the classroom. A question you might ask, and I'll just preemptively answer it. Currently on the PGCS network, generative AI tools such as Chat GPT, Gemini, Copilot are not unlocked and open for students yet because we've been wanting to put these guardrails in place to make sure that we've got the right amount of AI literacy across the district, and our teachers have the comfort level to engage our students in the use of these tools. And so as recently as this morning, my team was on a call with Laguna Beach, California, which created in their district with with some developers, a Google extension that helps teachers work with students around academic integrity and the use of generative AI. And we're really intrigued by it, and so we're gonna meet with Laguna again and their developer. And that would be the kind of thing that we would want to put in place where we have Google extensions and other academic integrity tools in place when we when we launch and open up generative AI tools on the PGSPS network for students. So this is our last slide. So just overall, just in terms of our AI ecosystem, we've we've promoted, we've produced a pretty robust framework, which I encourage you to look at. We've got AI guidelines which are continually updated. We have our AI website, which is constantly being refreshed. We have multiple innovation labs and innovation mastermind programs in place where groups of teachers are coming together to experiment with the tools and help drive our work going forward. And all of this is is leading to just the the next generation of of teaching and learning. And so we're we're excited about it. We appreciate the board's support. We think the board in Prince George's County has and continues to be in the forefront of this in terms of policy and governance around this. So we appreciate that, and we're happy to answer any questions. Apologize for taking as much time as we did, Dr. Moss.
All is well. It's you and Dr. White, so y'all can have all the time you need. But at this, Ms. Welsh, do you have any more presentation around this before I turn it over to the committee for questions?
So the only thing I do want to point out, there was any, I only and Cindy, if you want to pull up the policy, there's only two changes to the policy that I made because it's it's pretty much basically on base was on topic as far as moving forward with what we need to do. And one had to do with the actual work group that previously had talked about. If you could scroll down, it's like page two, Cindy. There you go. I don't know what happened. I swear. Anyway, it previously had that it was going to be a cross-functional joint working group, and then it actually listed out every single division that would be involved in this. And so Dr. Zuckerman had asked that it be revised and say convene an AI work group to allow for flexibility because just as he was sharing tonight, there he's had different people coming in and going into the work group to provide the information. And not always do you need the same divisions, you know, that are present. So this is more functional. And then the last change or two small changes, if you'll scroll down, Cindy, to number six, yes. I and then added, the only thing that was added was teachers will guide and monitor student use of AI in the classroom setting and during instruction, and non-teacher guided instruction applications of AI use by students in all educational contexts. And and really what that is discussing or saying refers to the fact that there's times when that the students are using, teachers are having students use AI where there isn't, let's say, there isn't a teacher right there, but the students are conducting independent research or study or homework or internships when the teacher is absent. So that that is another piece of the process. So it's a little bit expanded. Other than that, everything else seems to still be appropriate for where we are with AI.
Thank you so much, Ms. Welsh. I do want to, you know, remind the committee and the general public that one of our new processes as a committee is, many board members have submitted modifications or addendum to these policies in advance of today's meeting. So I do, but but colleagues, if something else do arise, know that we won't block you from from being able to make those additions, but we have tried to make substantial changes in advance of the meeting. And so the question is, shall the committee recommend Policy zero one two three Artificial Intelligence to the policy sponsors for revision approval? So at this time, we'll take some discussion. And I believe Board Member Walker, you had your hand up first, so I want to make sure I do that. And I want to say this as I get ready to recommend Board Member Walker, we do have Board Member Olivo and Board Member Brown who are on with us. If they have questions, they'll join at the end. But I didn't do this properly. Welcome, Board Member Olivo to the board. Welcome to the Policy and Governance Committee. We appreciate you being with us tonight. So I just want to formally welcome you, and please chime in if you've got questions or concern. Board Member Walker, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. You know, I'm so excited about this topic, guys. I think that not only is Prince George's County just leading the way, but I was really excited to hear about the partnerships and the amount of time that you all are spending to ensure that our scholars and our educators are using it most effectively and efficiently. I think that this is work that we have to do because AI is here, and I don't think we should shy away from it. So one, kudos on the work that you all are doing. You know, I'm doing research in this space, so I think that's why I'm really excited about it. So I'm gonna ask around AI and cognition because one of the things that at least I'm seeing is that there could, there's great things with AI, and I think that it will help us, but there's also the challenges and overreliance. Sir. And overreliance on on AI. And so one of the things I want to be able to do is ensure that they're still thinking. So for the cognition pieces, I'm thinking about how they perceive information, how they make decisions, and how it doesn't become a crutch or overreliance on this AI. So I was wondering if you all could talk about and Board Member Moss might tell me that this is not the time to ask questions about the AI program work you're doing, not just the policy. But I was wondering if if you guys could talk a little bit about how we're ensuring that students still need to think. They still need to do their work, and this is a tool to aid them in enhancement or better understanding.
Yeah, so I think Andy and Kim said it best when they talked about that we're in year zero, year one. And all the different stakeholders you have to touch to make such something so robust, powerful. The tool that Andy mentioned that they were on with Laguna Beach will be a tool that, for example, I give a student, I'm about to give an assignment, and I am telling the student that they can only use a tool for this component and this component. Right? Which means that these other three things in that lesson, they will have to generate on their own. They're gonna have to have pieces where that creativity, that goal directed, that, you know, global citizen mindset comes into play. So that's what we're working on to create that integrity, that this whole assignment, I didn't give it to you and you could do, but how do you give them a little bit? So you get, you want them to understand, and you want them to use, but you also want them to be creative and think. And so that's why we're searching those kind of tools that teachers will have as they're working to assign work to students.
And Board Member Walker, I'll give you, your time's out, but I'll give you a second round in just a moment if you got another question. All right, Vice Chair Briggs?
Thank you so much. So I just want to say that first, thank you all for the presentation, and it was really comprehensive and helpful to know that there's so much that's been happening behind the scenes about AI. And I know that I've received a number of questions from the community and other kind of stakeholder leaders that want to know what is Prince George's County doing to address AI. So it's great to see that that's happening, and it's pretty robust. I did just want to name maybe the elephant in the room that I think a lot of people, when they initially think of AI and technology, comes to mind, which is privacy rights. I know we talked about this in the PII and, you know, information sharing and gathering. I just wanted to know to what extent any of you could speak to what protections are we either considering? Or what types of protections will exist for students to ensure that none of their information is being accessed or shared? And I also think like when we think about the, you know, just the the nature of technology, you know, phones and in students' hands. I think of videos and all the different things that happen. So can you speak to any of those concerns that parents or community members may have around PII, personal identifiable information, and steps that we're taking to protect that?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna ask, yes, we can speak to it. And Ms. Robertson, why don't you start us off, and I'll come behind you?
Sure. So we do review, as I mentioned, we vet every tool that we open on our network for privacy concerns, and we ensure that they are available at the age range that they're expected to be available for. So if it's a tool that's not to be used for students under thirteen, it's not accessible for them, same we don't open it for students who are, you know, eighteen and under within our district. So that's one. And then I think also socializing with our teachers, the importance of protecting PII and sharing ways to actually create a prompt without including any personally identifiable information. We know that this is still a process, and people still need to understand what that process means and what that process looks like. But over-socializing the idea that essentially we're using artificial intelligence. So don't become over-reliant to the point that Dr. Dr. White was mentioning, not to become over-reliant on something that's artificial. It is, it is a source that can support and help, but making sure our teachers understand the importance of that.
Just want to add to.
I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you my time, Dr. Zuckerman.
Thank you. I just want to add two things to what Kim was saying. And it's, I'm glad that Ms. Johnson and others and Ms. Howell are on because from a, when we procure, Mr. Briggs, when we procure software, our software procurement process, all purchases of software starting a year ago now go through Ms. Robertson, me, and our team. We review it, number one, for privacy, security, interoperability, does it work within our our system, and accessibility for students with special needs. And there are times where we have not moved software forward because the software has failed on any of those domains. And a lot of smaller ed tech companies do fail on the privacy front, and we say, nope, this is not gonna be an approved tool here in Prince George's County Public Schools. So there is that piece that's just, it's just a much So there is that piece that's just, it's just a much more robust software procurement process that we put in place starting a year ago. It's centralized now. And just the second thing, I just want to say, we updated and are continuing to update our students' rights and responsibilities handbook, so that you look through it two years ago, you wouldn't really see mention of AI. Now it's in there, deep fakes and some other areas where we talk about just the misuse of AI. And and so that's in there now, and we're continuing to add to it. So I just want to reemphasize the the importance of socializing these terms and concepts across the district, and and these are the steps we're taking.
Dr. White, I think you got your hand up. You can have the balance of my time. You muted, Dr. White.
I wanted to just add that sometimes even when you're at conferences and vendors will approach you and tell you about something or another district that sounds amazing, because of how strict we are when we look across for the same thing that Board Member Briggs said, sometimes that's why we deny certain things to use in our district for that exact reason.
Thank you all so much. I've got thirty-six seconds left. I appreciate you all pulling this together. I'm most excited about the the data, the literacy component around showing our kids how to use it, showing our educators how to use it. I think that's 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 important. And I just want to appreciate and acknowledge the fact that you all haven't rushed this work, that you all actually decided to take this time before rolling out all these applications out. So thank you all for doing that. Other colleagues, do you all have additional questions before I go to a round two? All right, colleagues on the committee, I'm going to let Board Member Brown go as part of the first round set of comments, because I want to give them the same opportunity to ask questions in the second round if necessary. Board Member Brown.
Thank you so much, and thank you so much for the presentation. I think one of my questions that I've had, some of the callouts that I've had just from my district schools is when lessons are embedded in the curriculum, and I'm thinking AI, a lot of times they don't have access to it. Those videos that are on YouTube or whatever have you, those videos that they should be able to play. If AI is probably, if not already, embedded in the curriculum, are we going to have those type of hiccups? Is it going to be difficult for teachers to continue the lesson plan? Because that seems to be a hiccup from what my constituents have told me regarding lesson plans. Thank you.
Sure. So I'll jump in, and Andy, you can follow me. So sometimes we have experiences in our curriculum with something like YouTube, and then we have to, we have to continually check. We just actually had a meeting about this. We have to continually check because that link could drop. When it comes to AI, and that's why I always say from a systemic perspective versus a school perspective, sometimes schools cheat our process to go through content, curriculum, and IT, and they're just trying to use their own things, which may not make it through the firewall, right? That's why we have a process to vet digital tools and vet just different AI things that we use in the curriculum. Those AI that we're purchasing from a systemic will be live in our curriculum. So we want to make sure, and Chief Zuckerman has started that process to communicate with schools that when they're interested in something, that they have to at least come through our process so that we can see, same reasons we're saying with you all for privacy, and then give access if it will work. So they're probably getting caught on some of those glitches.
Yeah, and then I have to mention privacy. I know that scholars have access to Twitter or X. I don't even know what it's called now. And so have we checked as far as like the privacy, because I don't have an X account, as far as privacy is concerned, when our scholars do get on Twitter through their Chromebooks?
Yes, so I'm, the, it's it's interesting you bring this up, because we're going to have a meeting with our communications team in the next few weeks around social media and web filtering, and just see where we want to go as a district. So we do that, all of the privacy policies. And we just have to draw a distinction between sometimes what's happening, what's on our network versus what's not not on our network, or what a student might be doing on social media that's outside and not a PGCPS email address, and what we can and can't regulate. So that that could be some of what is going on here. What I would say is that, just one last thing on this, which is our web filtering, which might catch stuff and block something, it's it's dynamic. Meaning that, like, like Dr. White said, a link could be broken because the 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 underlying developer made an update, and that throws off the algorithm that is caught up in our web filtering. And when that happens, teachers, all staff members, I have the ability to just click on the unblock page if they get a restricted page that comes up, and it'll come to our team. We have a, we have a data protection team that will review it and see what the issue is and very quickly resolve it. That is almost a twenty-four seven operation at this point, as you can imagine. And so I do get some complaints once in a while from our users who might have had something that was available to them yesterday, and today it was blocked. And and oftentimes, it's due to an update behind the scenes that we then just have to go back in and and move the the website into the appropriate policy group. So stay tuned on just the social media piece, because we're going to come back and and look at that just with respect to our network and our use.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Colleagues, are there any other questions in this first round? All right, seeing as there are none, Board Member Walker, do you still want your second round?
Yes, thank you so much. For the policy itself, I was just hoping, I don't recall if we can just ensure that we review this one annually. That would be helpful, just because AI is changing so often that this is something we should absolutely come back to. I believe we talked it before, so that's one thing I wanted to say. The second piece, since my CFO friends is on, I just wanted to double check that this is, whatever we need is inside of our budget already for this year. So when I say whatever we need, I mean, the work that we're doing in year one is already covered inside of the budget, or if there's anything additional that we need to do as board members to ensure that this work continues and advocate for, because I would be an advocate for whatever is needed. Yeah, let's answer that first.
Andy and I have included all the things that we need is included in one of our budgets.
Excellent. Okay, thank you so much. Another piece I was thinking about is, and you might not be able to answer it now, but the work that you're doing around social media, I do know that, you know, our scholars are super smart, and they go on these sites in order to kind of get through to places where they can leverage it, social media. And so what I'm wondering, or YouTube, or whatever sites they're not supposed to go to on their, on their computers. I was hoping from the protection perspective, you know, do we run reports monthly or quarterly to see what sites have been leveraged so that we can know what our scholars not only are doing, but how we can best protect them?
Yeah, so we actually do have a tool called Catch On, which which we look at, which gives us insight and analytics into all the digital tools. And so we do, we are looking at that. We're usually looking at it in terms of making purchasing decisions for the following year or where to direct resources to. With respect to, with respect to YouTube specifically, we have different policy settings for YouTube so that younger students have a much more restrictive access, as you can imagine, than our older students. So it's age appropriate, and that's run through our web filtering system. So we are looking at it on a regular basis. And and as I say, from time to time, it's 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 not a, it's not a perfect science. I agree with you completely. We should be looking at this annually, and our students are incredibly smart and savvy and know how to, you know, move around the, all the different ways. And so we're constantly just trying to stay one step ahead. And I think that's all of us who are raising students and educating students when it comes to the the evolution of technology.
No, thank you. I can't ask my third one, but that's fine. I'll set your level. Thanks.
I got you in a minute, Board Member Walker. Board Member Briggs.
Okay, thank you so much. I wanted to just come back to the privacy piece, because I don't think I was, or I don't think the question I was actually asking was clear and it wasn't answered. So what I meant was more from the legal standpoint. I know that there, when I think of generative AI, I think of them collecting data to evolve their systems, right? They're wanting to get better at it. So to what extent, I know we talked about a lot of partnerships, to what extent are we partnering with individual organizations, companies that are collecting data for their own purposes? And then how is that being mitigated to whatever degree that that happens was really the question that I was asking. Thank you so much.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Briggs. So that is the primary reason right now why ChatGPT and others are closed for students, quite frankly. We are piloting premium licenses for Gemini and Copilot for staff, which at an enterprise level, when you pay for that enterprise license, we are, they are not using our data to train the model beyond Prince George's County. That data is staying with us. It is incredibly expensive. So, but that is the number one reason why we have not opened up the other generative AI tools to students for the reason you're saying. Conmigo, for example, closed network, closed system, our data is staying within us, within Conmigo. It's not, it's it's being used to train a very limited of model of Conmigo that is not attributable to any student, but it will not go beyond the Conmigo firewall. Kim, I know you've looked at this much more closely. Why don't you just chime in real quick?
Just to add, in addition, we are incorporating an AI addenda into every digital tool that we procure beginning July one. So currently, that addenda is in in place so that any vendor has to disclose AI. We let them know that we don't accept tools that we, they're using our data to train their model. So those are not tools that we would procure.
Got it. And I know the last thing I'll say is, because just, because I think that people will watch this and they may want to know this, so this may be helpful to your team. But the the data breach that we had recently, with all of these partnerships, we're not giving any access to them to have access to our system in any way through those contracts. I think you mentioned, but I just want to make sure that that's the case.
No, that is, that's correct.
Great.
Thank you all so much. Looks like there are no more committee hands, but I do have some time, and I'll give it to Board Member Walker for my time to ask whatever your your final question is, Board Member Walker. So you can give her my time, Cindy.
Okay, it'll be really quick. It was around, and and you don't have to answer it now. It's just work that I'm hoping you can work on as you talk to these vendors. You know, AI, as you know, is just getting so much more progressively smart and adapting to so many different things. And I'm wondering if we can look at it around bullying, because I think that there's a place for that. And I'm just hoping that you all can talk to them, whatever software you're using or whatever vendors you're using. How can one use this in bullying situations, and how do we mitigate that upfront? And it might be part of our trainings, but I think that within the tool itself, that it can be extracted and then leveraged in so many different ways. So we could just keep an eye on that. Now, we can't fix all problems and anticipate all things, but I think that there's some things we can do. I'm talking things like deep fakes that you've already mentioned, things that can appear that someone said it and they didn't really. At least we'll be able to backtrack that and find out what's going on. But I can just imagine as it continues that it will only get more and more deeply accessible. Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much, Board Member Walker. I think the staff, you you caught that right. We can check back in on on another time around that. Ms. Adley, we could just probably add it to the tracker too, from as an action item from our, from our meeting. But thank you all so much for your presentation, for your energy coming to us. Again, thank you. So glad to hear that PGCPS is a leader in this, and it's because of you all's leadership. So the question is, shall the committee recommend policy zero, one, two, three, artificial intelligence to the policy sponsor? Ms. Adley, please take the roll call.
Moss?
Uh, yes, I.
Mr. Briggs?
Hi.
Ms. Walker? Ms. Walker?
That policy has been recommended to the policy sponsor for revision approval. Thank you, Chief Zuckerman. Thank you, Dr. White, for being with us tonight.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, it's two nights in a row, Dr. Zuckerman. We've gotten to hang out, so.
I know. I'll see you tomorrow. I'll see you tomorrow night.
All right, no way, no way, no way. All right, we're going to move to policy three, two, three, purchasing. This policy was before us last time. We provided immense feedback on that with detailed line-by-line feedback. And so tonight's conversation is an opportunity for the administration to to come back and and give us feedback around this. But we 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 worked through this policy the last time, but certainly want to give the administration an opportunity to do that. So Ms. Welsh, if you could, you know, present this, and then we'll create an opportunity for board members to ask additional questions. Just so you all know, given we have so much, I've put time on the, on on tonight. So Ms. Athlet, could you give them time to begin this, and if we need more, we'll deal with it. But I want to keep us accountable for time tonight. Ms. Welsh, have the floor.
Thank you. So I want to say that we did, I posted, I had Cindy post this one policy that has every track change we've ever made. But what happened was, I think there were so many track changes at this point in that policy that it quit accepting anything I was putting in, so I couldn't get a Board Member Walker's comments in. So I said, this is really a mess. So first I had an attachment with hers. So then Cindy texts me and she said, what about if you go in and accept everything that's there, and then add in Board Member Moss's and Board Member Walker's comments so that we can see clearly where these comments are? So so I did that, and then we posted that also, so that you sort of get a sense of both. So Cindy, that's, so it would be a waste of time really to try to figure out all the track changes. Let's go to the one where I accepted, and then it shows specifically the actual comments, the proposals. And I did keep in, because it was new for, from the last time. Oh, and I will, we also had some requests from the Sustainability and Resilience Office related to when we are purchasing things as it relates to sustainability and climate control. So we, I did incorporate that language too as a new change. And so they're they're all in track changes. But I did keep the changes that were required through the OLA audit, because that's from our last meeting. I had that. And I put them, I just highlighted those, so you could see everything. So as you can see in the first sentence, it's in terms of what's purchasing at the best value to meet operational, educational, and sustainability needs of Prince George's County Public Schools. And then if you scroll down, Cindy, to the purpose statement, then it also says that in addition to that school administration's office supervised obtained goods, equipment, services essential for effective operations of the school system in the most sustainable manner possible to minimize toxic and harmful components. So those were recommendations from the Sustainability and and Resilience Department. And then if you scroll further down, there was a quest also to add these, and that was from the the OLA audits. I'll just keep having you continue down, because we discussed that at the last time. But the, and this is from the OLA audit, then keep going. And then they also requested that we have language that talks about sustainability development. And so that's an actual definition, but it's really a comprehensive approach to living whereby the needs of the current generation are met without compromising the ability of the future generations to meet their own needs. I'm going to read the rest of it for you, but then the other one has to do with sustainability purchasing, which is why this is all here, is making the effort to purchase products or services that have lesser or reduced negative effect or increased positive effect on human health and ecological environment and social economic well-being when compared with competing, and if you can scroll down, Cindy, with products that serve the same purpose. So that would, that's, those were the sustainability in additions. So then, if I, and now I have no idea where, what happened to all the things I crossed out. Well, anyway, you have to look at the next one. With it, um, hold on one second. It might. No, it doesn't show. Okay, so what I did was previously, it said that the policy was going to, for equipment, materials, services, and supply, which are considered sort of small items, that that the change in law, the reason this policy came up was to to upgrade this to, it's currently fifty thousand, but it's upgraded to a hundred thousand as the benchmark, as the limit for what could be purchased. That once it hit a hu- a hundred thousand, then it would go to the board, and there would be a need for a formal bid. And Chair Moss has requested that the policy, his recommendation was that it would be actually moved down to fifty thousand, back, I keep it at fifty thousand the the way it was previously, and not add the, not add to, not keep it, not add it to a hundred thousand. And so in both those areas, and the language that was there previously said that it was going to meet the requirements of Education Article five dash one, one, two, which actually is the law that we caused us to open the policy for increasing it to a hundred thousand. So all of that was taken. for um increasing it to a hundred thousand. So all that was taken out and instead it was just the um the fifty thousand. And then if you go down to, to number three, uh, at, the language was added and, and the participation and accountability requirements for underrepresented businesses as outlined in this policy. That language was actually from Board Member Walker where she had requested if we would put that into um that particular statement. So that was included there. And then if you scroll down further, um. Okay, so then this language, this highlighted language again comes from the OLA audit. But in addition to that, there was, uh, can you scroll one second, Cindy, to see if I'm missing anything? No, okay. So then all contract actions would, would be reported to the board on a quarterly basis. I think prior, it said biannual, twice a year. So now this would be on a quarterly basis. And then in addition to man or procurement vendor award amount, it would also break it down by participation of business type and funding source, uh, local, state and federal. I think again, that came from Board Member Walker. And then again, as you scroll down, we have the fifty thousand as the limit. And then uh with construction being at two hundred and fifty thousand, but then it would have to, all of this would be reported to the board on a quarterly basis. So that was added in because previously I think it just said a report to the board. And then if you can scroll down, Cindy, um. And again, this all came from the um OLA audit. So then we get to instructional materials and supplies and the um the purchase. So what it is, is when the anticipated purchase price of specific instructional materials or supplies is less than, originally we had two million dollars and um it's so, and Board Member uh Chair Moss requested that it be placed to one million dollars. Um, and the same, and so what that means is that anything up to one million dollars, um, it, the superintendent could move forward and approve it and there wouldn't be a need for a formal bid. But if it was uh one million more uh or more, then of course it would have to be bid it out as well as it would have to um, that would have to be approved by the board. So then if you can scroll down further.
Excuse me, Ms. Welsh, just, just one quick clarification. It was originally one billion. The, the administration requested two million. My request.
Correct.
Back to one million.
I'm sorry. Yes, you're correct. I, I thank you for correcting me. It's so confusing because you know what happened? I just realized when I went and accepted everything, it took out all my crossouts because so now I'm like, oh, wait, I gotta get back and look to see what was there before. So this is like getting, this is being pretty um, um, pretty uh challenging to be able to read through this. It's, this isn't the right one, Cindy. Okay. There we go. And then, so that was the, that had to do with um instructional materials. And then the next one, if I am correct, it had to do with, um, can you scroll down? Okay, here. So then this one, when the anticipates say, can you scroll up one second so I can see this other piece of this? Uh, this, so this has to do with staff development, instructional staff development, uh contracted services. And uh what was there was, I, and I, I'm guessing, because I can't tell from this version, but I guess it was originally two hundred and fifty, we requested for it to be moved up to five hundred thousand. And then uh Chair Moss is asking that it be at uh two hundred and fifty thousand. So meaning that anything less than two hundred and fifty thousand superintendent uh will approve it and it um, um, and there's no need for a formal bid. But if it is two hundred and fifty thousand or more, then it will go to the board for approval as well as to the um, as to the um, um, the uh, uh, I just lost my train of thought. It'll go to the board for approval as well as to for bid. So if you can scroll down further. And that again was uh from the, the, oh, can you scroll up one second? Because I have a change here. So then again, um. Something got lost here. This was actually what it was saying was that there would be, this would be uh all contract actions within this category. I'll have to put that in shall be reported to the board on a, it was bi-weekly basis and now it's going to say quarterly basis. So I will put that language back in there. It's, I'm sure it's in the other version, but we'll get that in there. But anyway, any place where it said bi-annual has now been increased to quarterly. So that the board would receive reports on a quarterly basis. And then when we get to professional services, this one again was um, has been at two hundred and fifty thousand since I want to say two uh two thousand twenty-two. And uh Chair Moss requested that it be again um decreased to a hundred and fifty thousand so that uh anything um more than at a hundred and fifty thousand or more than would uh be required board approval as well as a formal bid process. So then if we can scroll down further. And all of this, this, uh, and again, all contract actions within the ca- ca- this category shall be reported to the board on a quarterly basis. So um and then you'll see all the things that need to be included. And again, this is all through OLA's requests. And then if you scroll down further, um, okay. And this again was, was OLA, all this highlighted, so and continue further. And now we starting here is the uh request from Board Member Walker and um, it talks about accountability and participation of unrepresented businesses. A variable viable goal of a minimum of six percent of the total annual value of all purchases of goods and services shall be awarded to underrepresented businesses. The su- um superintendent says needs to ensure that good faith efforts are made to increase access to procurement opportunities for underrepresented business, which include and I, and my understanding is that these things are being done now. But anyway, advertising procurement opportunities and media, media, it should be outlets that reach the underrepresented communities, offering outreach sessions, training and bid preparation workshops for small and underrepresented vendors, maintaining and utilizing directory or certified underrepresented business from state and local agencies and providing information and guidance on the certification process. And then if you scroll down further, oh, I think that's it. I think I included everything because the other request you had were in the body of the, of the uh, of the uh policy. But, but Board Member Walker did ask the question as it relates to um their legal requirements and also with um MBA and uh um like for women, those contracts and stuff. I did reach out to um our, um, to operations and um our um, we have a whole office that deals with this and they did, and I have not heard back from them yet. But I know that when it goes through legal review, uh OGC will probably have their contract people look at just to make sure that it is legally correct. Because of course, we don't want a policy that, you know, doesn't meet the legal standards that it should.
Thank you so much.
Those were the changes. So I, so I do know that uh, uh, Ms. Howe is on the line as well as uh Ms. Johnson. And I think Quincy's still on and I think, I don't know if Mr. House is on, but um I, I'm assuming Ms. uh Doc- um Dr. Moss, this would be their opportunity or first we have questions or what, what's the next step?
Um, we can, we'll move to, I mean, you've presented the policy. Do you have anything else you need to share as it relates to it? And then we can move into questions.
No, I think, you know, I wanted to incorporate everything that had, you all had provided. And then um certainly this is an opportunity to um, for um staff that they want to, not at this moment, but whenever you want them to, but an opportunity for them to also share from it. I will tell you one thing. I did go and look through every county, their policies, just to get an idea um, what they, what they have as the standard. And eleven out of the twenty-four counties actually have a hundred thousand um dollars um as the, they're using actually the Education Article five dash one, one, two. And then uh four are at fifty thousand, four at twenty-five thousand, one is at seventy-five thousand. And then there were a couple that, God help me and God, I must say, God help their, their constituents and their public in their community because I looked everywhere on that, on that website and could not find their policy section, which is so odd. So, but um, but I just thought I'd share that. But other than that, no, I have nothing else.
All right. Well, board members, the question is, shall the committee recommend policy thirty-three, twenty-three for purchasing? Um, to the policy sponsor for revision approval? Is there any discussion at this time? This is an opportunity for board members to, uh, committee members to ask questions. Uh, Board Member Walker, um, and then Board Member Vice Chair Briggs and then uh Board Member Boozer Strutter.
Hey, Robin, thank you, Ms. Welsh. Thank you so much. This was a lot of work and I know for this one, we gave you significant amount of input. So sincerely appreciate you pulling it together. Um, I did have a question. One of the things that I think we did want to take a look at, and this can be, I'm, I'm fine to vote on it and then we talk about it if needed at the board meeting. I'm happy to do that. But I know that the shifts in the two hundred and fifty thousand versus the five hundred thousand and the one million versus the two million, I just wanted to see on average how much, how many that is? Is it fifty percent more of the contracts we will be looking at as a board? Is it like, what is the um level of what the contracts are at those stages? Just for help with the board work. I am a fan of additional accountability and oversight by way of um fiscal responsibility. I just want to understand what the workload will look like so we can plan accordingly.
Absolutely.
And I, I. I don't know if you have that data now, but.
I will pass that over to uh um Ms. Johnson and Ms. Howe and, and maybe they can show that information.
Yeah, I can briefly chime in and then.
And again, if you don't have.
I can chime in and then Doctor, uh Director Johnson can um add any additional insight. Um, so I guess so, number one relating to the decrease in the threshold from two hundred and fifty thousand for contracted services down to a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, we do have a number of procurements that are above that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold right now. Um, overall, our total contract that we issue that are above the two hundred and fifty thousand mark is a hundred and twenty. Um, if this were to be lowered down to one fifty, there is a population of contracts within the range of one hundred to two fifty, um, which is another one hundred and sixty contracts. So to have that exact sweet spot of if it's one fifty and above, um, we don't have that exact data point. But just generally speaking, knowing that within the range of between one hundred and two fifty for last year, we had about one hundred and sixty contracts that fell within that window. So there's a certain percentage of that that would move to that next threshold that would require board approval.
Um.
Do you have anything to add to that?
Well, we'll, we'll get you on a second round with Board Member Walker, uh Board Member Briggs. Uh, do you have a question?
Okay. And thank you so much. So I, I wanted to say, and I guess this is also for Chief Howe and um Ms. Johnson, but you know, I really think i- i- it's important that we, we make decisions, um, you know, with enough information. Um, and I, and I vaguely remember, I think we might have had a discussion about this in two thousand twenty-four um before June of two thousand twenty-four about the funding amounts for um, you know, for purchasing and for procurement. Um, I just want to understand a bit more, what would be the implications if we did have more contracts around programming and just the process you all have in place? Will there be any unintended consequences to any of these changes? Will this kind of stifle the ability to kind of move quickly? Um, can you just speak to any of those things?
Yeah, I think that's a great question and thank you for that. Uh, we'd love to be able to have some time to pull that analysis together, particularly within that one fifty to two fifty range. So if we kind of bump it up from, bump it down from two fifty to one fifty, what would be the potential impact um and by area and the types of services it would um uh have an impact on? So we'd like to get the information back to you. Um, I'm not sure of your timeline to get through final decisions on this board policy. Uh, but we need some time to pull that together. We can certainly provide it back to Robin so she can then share it with the committee members so you have that data point.
And Ms. Johnson, did you have anything to share?
No, I don't have anything additional to add to that.
Okay. Yeah, I would love to get that information because I think that that was part of the discussion we had in two thousand twenty-four. Um, so it would be good to just revisit that for everybody. Um, so thank you for that.
You've got time left, Board Member, uh Vice Chair Briggs. Do you need it?
Nothing for me. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Board Member Boozer Strutter?
All right. Thank you so much and thank you all to who worked on this, these revisions. Um, I was also going to ask some similar questions and, and I appreciate that we'll get some of that data around impact and timing of moving work forward through these contracts. I, I appreciate the addition of the uh sustainable materials um preferences in the po- the policy of the Climate Change Action Plan. I did want to ask Director Johnson about if there's, how there's opportunities to be proactive about that. If there's purchasing of, you know, say, plastic items where there's now a more sustainable option, is there, is there a proactive outreach to the, you know, the person in PG CPS making that purchase to, to alert them to that option? Is that something that your department will be able to do? Thank you. That's my, that's my only question.
All right. I think that that is actually a really great question and we are in the process of um notifying the communities, you know, of the changes that we have in the sustainability of our contracts. Um, we have done two different things. One, posting onto email and marketplace, um, which is where our requirement is to post of all of our solicitations. And uh we are also updating our solicitation documents where it will show um the sustainability requirements. Um, in addition to that, we are also working with some of the um departments that we have inside of PG CPS. And so they are actually taking a look at some of the um statement of works and then they are also helping us to provide language, helping us to develop um scoring criteria around sustainable materials and, and those of the likes. Um, so those are just right now, a couple of the things that we're doing right now um for this effort.
Great, thank you.
You got twenty seconds left, Board Member Boozer Strutter. You're good?
I'm good. Thank you.
Let's see. Um, I, I do have a couple of comments I want to make um around this work. Um, one, thank you all for taking these revisions. Uh, I, I do want to name that our neighboring district um in size of us, um, that, that's the same size of us, Montgomery County, has a fifty thousand dollar threshold across um all, all these line items. So uh, my work in revising this policy was hypercognizant of some of these. As somebody who's worked in a school district, I understand the contracting process. But I also think this board has a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that we're being good stewards of our dollars. So I am going to ask the committee to uh, you know, advance this policy through the process, but that we also advance this so the full board can have an opportunity to engage and weigh in around this. I'm also going to make a request that when we do make that presentation, I'd like to know how many contracts were awarded right at that dollar amount. Um, you know, just to be transparent, sometimes we tell vendors and we ask vendors to um, you know, don't go at this threshold so we don't have to take it before the board. So when we do that analysis, I will ask for, I'm going to ask for an analysis across all of our contracts and how many are right there at the threshold um and significantly close to the threshold. And I'm also going to ask us to list out the contract names and, and vendors and locations. So um, I think we do need to have a full conversation around contracting. We owe that to the general public. Um, we are consistently, um, folks are often have narratives about us that aren't necessarily true about the way in which we're spending dollars. So any opportunity to be transparent, I think we need to do that. And so I think this process, this board policy moving it forward gives the full board an opportunity to engage with the general public, um, because we have nothing to hide. But I do think um, you know, I, I made these recommendations. I think they're reasonable. Um, you know, other places have, I mean, they don't even have a million dollars for instructional materials in Montgomery County. Um, it's, it's still fifty thousand dollars. So I just wanted to make those comments. I don't have any questions for the administration um relative to this, uh, but I did want to make those comments about why I moved those thresholds to be uh presently where they are. Um, Mi- uh Board Member Oliva.
Thank you so much, Chair. Um, and I just want to say, um, I deeply appreciate all the work that has gone into this in advance of me joining the conversation and I, I do realize I'm coming in at the eleventh hour, but I wanted to ask um some questions about um Section seven, the Accountability and Participation of Underrepresented Businesses, which it looks to me like it, you know, is in addition, probably thanks to other board member comments. So I appreciate that. My concern is that um while we use this term underrepresented businesses here, there is not a definition at the top of what underrepresented businesses are. So at the top, we, we um, we explain um the um Certified Minority Business Enterprise and County Based Minority Business Enterprise. So I would make the assumption that those are considered our two categories of underrepresented. So I would make the assumption that those are considered our two categories of underrepresented businesses, but I think it would be important that in those definitions, they are, if that is the case, that in those definitions, they are deliberately mentioned as underrepresented businesses, so that those two categories are then held accountable in the, in the bottom. So that's, that's, that's my first comment. And then I wanted to also ensure that in the reporting requirements, I would love that the reporting requirements are also do include whether or not these are certified minority businesses and/or certified county-based minority businesses in the, in the reports that are required. And then my final comment would be that I would be looking in future years as we review this policy to see an increase in the six percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Olivo, for your comments. You already such a great contributor. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to flag this. I'm glad you pulled this up. I believe our last conversation was that we would use our equity policy to support those definitions for underrepresented groups. I don't know how we missed that. Colleagues, if I'm wrong about that, let me know, but I, I do believe we mentioned talking about our equity policy for that. So I did want to, do you want to speak to that? Ri- Ms. Welsh, you may have included it, got lost in your documents. I, I want to give you an opportunity to, to respond to that.
So actually, I did intend to put the definition for underrepresented, and so I apologize. So I'm glad you brought that to my attention, because when I thought, oh, because Board Member Walker did have it in her comments, but it wasn't in an appropriate place. So I wanted to put it in. So I'm glad you brought that up. But I believe that in, in terms of the report, because I remember, I, I think Board Member Walker asked for this, and I thought that I had included that. Oh, I know where it was. It was in the, I think in the beginning there. Priorities of invitation for bids, requests for proposals, other solicitations, so they have to determine participation, but then wait a minute. I guess that's what I was thinking of. But no, we can, we can add that too. That's not, that is not a problem. Oh. Oh, I know what it was.
Okay, got it.
Because you, what you had referred to it as a breakdown of participation by business types. And so I did include that in there. But I mean, I can clarify it more. I, I was really just picking up Board Member Walker's language at that point in time.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to clarify, because I know you had done some of that.
But I will, I, I can, I can add a little bit more in there for the reports.
Thank you so much. I believe it was Board Member Briggs and then Board Member Walker. If I'm wrong, y'all, please correct me, but I believe we were in that order. Vice Chair Briggs.
Hey, thank you so much. I just want to double click on what Board Member Olivo, and correct me if I'm wrong in pronouncing your name. Okay, thanks. Shared, because I was thinking the exact same thing. So I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I also want to mention that I was curious about the, the section, Section Seven A, where it says a verifiable goal of a minimum of six percent of the total annual value of all purchases of goods and services. I know that'll probably be a large amount, because it's, it's an annual value. But I just want to ensure that we're not skirting through our minority business enterprises and giving them, you know, really deep, robust opportunities to engage with Prince George's County Public Schools. So I want to just echo the sentiment that I would love to see that six percent increase at some point, and I think that was also mentioned by Board Member Walker for our minority business enterprises. Also thought it was pretty vague, the definition, but I think you all mentioned that. And then the last thing I wanted to do was just clarify with, with Committee Chair Moss around your point around moving this policy to the board where you, because I know that one of the things, I want to make sure I'm clarifying, but I just want to say this before you speak, that I believe Director Adelaide mentioned that all kind of work on policies will now happen in the committee. So just want to clarify, are we moving it forward to vote, or are we moving it forward to discuss? Because then I wonder if it's a backwards plan of bringing more board members to the committee to kind of discuss this, and that'd give the administration more time to provide us the information we requested to.
Yeah. So when we vote today, we'll be moving it forward in the process, which is not the full board yet. So this would just be a continuation of the process. Our new board policy actually requires that all the work actually happens in committee, and then when it gets to the full board, it's actually for a vote. So any continuation of this work gives an opportunity for the public to engage, gives our committee an opportunity to engage. So I do apologize if I misled you to believe that this is going straight today. We still have a process that we follow before it even makes it to the full board. So, you know, today's vote is just to continue that process, not to advance it to the board for a full vote.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Sorry if I misled y'all. Board Member Walker.
Oh, oh, yes. It was a little, I didn't understand. That's exactly what I was saying as well. I, I just think we need to have a recommendation. Anyway, you already beat that one down. Thank you for saying it's staying in committee, and if we want to invite other members to join, that's fine, too. I think it's going to be very important for us to understand the data, and I'm big on no data paralysis, right? I don't want to get extra data just to get data for us to take a look at. I don't think it's value added, but I do think that we need to understand the number of contracts, which I think we heard today, as well as the impact and how we can make that work by way of processes, like what we have to do as a board in order to make this fiduciary responsibility work for us, as well as understand, does this mean, which I think I heard, that we also need to get RFPs for each of these as well. And so I just want to make sure that in the process that we are very cognizant of what the flow is, the impact and if financial and managerial pieces of that. And I can definitely be, when, when I have that information, I can be more supportive of where it is that we're going, for sure.
You got time?
Oh, okay. I never have time in the, in the spaces that I, I really, really need, but that's all I wanted to say on this piece. Thanks, guys.
I'll put that in your safe, in your penny bank for you, and I'll give it to you later.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments from colleagues during this round? You know, I, I'll just articulate that I think as we move this forward, those data points will be super important for us to be able to see. I'm deeply committed to seeing the threshold, so not only the amount that we would have to, but also the process that the board would have to go through. I mean, as someone who's worked in a system, I recognize that this takes force planning. It takes a lot of planning on behalf of our offices and our teams to be able to do that. But that should not negate us from having strong accountability processes that ensure that we do our fiduciary responsibility. So I do know the work might be, may be greater, but as, as many times as this board can display to the general public that we're being accountable for every dollar, and we're watching every dollar and cent, it makes it easier for us to request more of those funds. So this, this is, this is tied to our public perception as well. So let, th- those are my efforts in this. So at this time, the question shall be, shall the committee recommend Policy Thirty Three Twenty Three Purchasing to the policy sponsor for revision approval, which means they'll make more revisions to this, and then it will come back to them? Miss, did somebody have something to say? Ms. Adelaide, could you please?
Yeah, to submit, I'm sorry, just for clarification, it's going back to them, but can we be clear on what exactly we're asking them or tasking them with doing and by when? So by our next committee meeting, we're asking, can you just go over that, please, so we're clear?
Got you. I got you. So we are sending it back to them for revision approval. I do expect to have this back on the agenda at our May twenty ninth meeting, so where we can discuss this, where they'll come back with data points relative to the impact of this work, the number of contracts, what it would mean for the board in terms of governance, and the, the amount of contracts at certain thresholds relative to what we've proposed in, in terms of numeracy. I think I included everything folks asked for. Tell me if I didn't.
Mine was there. Thank you. I'm sure that's what Ms. Howell wanted to ask, too.
And Board Member Olivo, did I capture yours? Okay, Board Member Briggs. All right. Want to make sure, Board Member Boozer Strutter, I'm sorry I'm doing this, but I don't want to leave nobody out. Okay. So, Ms. Adelaide, could you please take the roll call?
Ms. Howell had her question, I mean, her hand up, just as a heads up, in case you didn't see it.
Oh, I did. Ms. Howe, I'm sorry.
No worries. Thank you. I just had a clarifying question, and maybe it'll be something that will be addressed later on. I know I'm not a part of the committee, but just thinking about the impact on our current process. So the recommendation that was added for Section Seven about underrepresented businesses and that a contract value of six percent of our business would be awarded to those types of businesses. Wanted to know, is that in consideration of our current policy with regards to IFBs and RFPs, that those contracts are awarded to the lowest bidder or the lowest bidder or highest technically rated bidder? So didn't know if that is in addition outside of those parameters, or is that inclusive of those current parameters? And if so, it might need to be clarified, so it's not just saying it's going to be awarded, because we do have a parameters around which those awards are supposed to be approved.
Board Member Walker, do you want to address this, or do we want to hash this out a little bit later? I want to make sure I.
Yeah, let me do, I want to do some thinking on it. I think it'll take more than our two and a half minutes. But I think that's a good thought on that, and I will come back with a recommendation that I'll send to Ms., Ms. Welsh, for sure, so that we can think through this a little bit more. And we can talk, too, offline, Dr. Moss, if you had any thoughts, but I definitely do have some thoughts around it. I just want to craft it.
I think it's a, thank you so much. I think it's a legitimate question that I don't know the answer. It's, it sounds, but supportive. So I guess we'll figure it out together. I, I think this is an opportunity to clarify, you know, our policies, our policy change last year as it relates to this committee. The, the board policy now articulates that based on what we've done, the administration would come back with a memo to the board around this policy. So we will be able to get this based on our board policy. Our board policy says the administration, if it's at odds with any of these, these recommendations for the next committee, a memo should be coming. That, that's outlined in our policy. So does the administration feel like they have what they need to be able to do that prior to us taking this vote, or we can talk about it later, but I do want to make sure y'all have what you need to accomplish your task?
Chief Howe?
I think we do. I mean, just based on what I heard today, I think we have what we need. We, I certainly have the takeaways, jot it down. I'm, I'm very much aware of the recommendation to change one of the thresholds, but we'll get you the data point to support that.
Absolutely. And, and just a moment of personal privilege real quick, I believe Director Johnson is new. Like, did you just come to us? Is she the new, new employee? Don't we have a new employee from somewhere doing this office? Is this right?
I guess fairly new. So, yeah.
Thank you for jumping in the fire with us. I just wanted to tell you, thank you. Sorry for doing that then, but I, I thought you were new, so I wanted to honor that. Ms. Adelaide, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Moss?
Hi.
Ms. Grace?
Hi.
Ms. Boozer Strutter?
Hi.
Ms. Walker?
Hi.
More information.
Thank you so much. Policy Thirty Three Twenty-
I just said some, I'm sorry.
Policy Thirty- Policy Thirty Three Twenty Three Purchasing will be recommended to the policy sponsor for revision approval. Board Member Walker, you, you need to say something to me. I got you. Come on.
I do. Thank you. It was really to Ms. Howell, because as I think about this question, it's such a good question that we need to think through, and I will send something to Ms. Welsh tonight. But if you have any thoughts, just knowing where it is we want to go and the intention, that would be helpful, too. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
I can provide that feedback to our Robin.
Okay, thank you.
All right. That means Ms. Chief House coming back to hang out with us on May twenty ninth.
I did, I appreciate the invite. I didn't say all that. But I, I'm glad I feel welcome, so thank you.
She's like, I didn't say I was coming back. We appreciate you, though. Thank you for hanging out with us tonight. I got to hang out with you yesterday, too. I know you tired of seeing me, too, but good to see you again. Thanks for coming, too. Let's do the legislative update. If there are no more questions or comments from the committee, y'all good on this? All right, sounds good. Now let's go to the legislative update. The chair recognizes Ms. Welsh, and I think she brought, the, the chief herself is informed tonight, who's going to be helping us with the legislative update. So Ms. Welsh, I'll let you do the honors.
Good evening again, and I do have a PowerPoint to share with you that just basically provides an overview of what our plans are in the legislative arena for the remainder of this year, and then the beginning of the new legislative session for the two thousand twenty six legislative session. So, and that to really, I, I think probably most importantly, because of the fact that we want to be working collaboratively, so I think it's really important that you are, that you are aware of what we are moving forward and how we can do it together. So Cindy, if you could please put the, the presentation up for us.
And to the, Ms. Welsh, real quick, to the committee, we won't, we won't vote on this plan tonight. We'll just talk about it and give some small general feedback. But then you will also have an opportunity to email Ms. Welsh what thoughts you have around this, and then we'll come back in May and, and talk about if any of it needs to be approved, or what approval these, these good folks need from us to be able to, to do their work effectively. But tonight, this is just an update and opportunity for us to give feedback and, and ask any questions of them. Sorry, Ms. Welsh, I didn't say that before you started.
Oh, no, that's okay. I think probably the biggest area that I will, just as a piggyback to what you were just saying, the biggest, biggest area where we absolutely need for the committee to vote on, as well as the board would be the legislative platform, because that's the critical piece in all this work. But let's move forward. So this is just Twenty Five Twenty Six, let's say, Plan, and it's a draft, and certainly can be revised at any point in time. And this just shares the people who are doing the work behind, Chief Boyd, myself, and also Administrator McCray. So you can scroll down, Cindy, keep going. And then I wanted to first talk about, again, why this whole collaborative communication is really extremely important, because PG, the Prince George's County Public Schools is committed to maintaining open, transparent, and proactive communication, and the work that we do through the Policy and Governance Committee and throughout the legislative session. And I know in the past, we've had lots of conversations as bills were coming and going, and of course, this year was much more active than pa- past years, but we really never moved forward unless we were all in agreement in terms of, of the different bills that, you know, were being proposed at that time. But our concern is, our interest is that by fostering a collaborative environment, we can ensure that the committee is regularly informed of all the legislative developments and any of the emergency policy issues and advocacy efforts that impact the school system. And I think, I think we did fairly good job in having that communication back and forth in terms of, because I know as board members, you visited many, many legislators throughout the legislative session. And so, and shared a lot of that information, which was extremely helpful. So any updates, you know, regular updates, briefing, strategic discussions, well, that are healthy to align legislative priorities are going to be really important and also support timely decision-making and respond effectively to evolving legislative activities. I see Chief Boyd's hand up.
I know. I'm so sorry. I said that I wasn't going to speak during this, this time unless there are questions. But I just wanted to, like, just add this soft comment that this statement and in my team developing this statement, it was very intentional, because I actually want to give a shout out to the Policy and Governance Committee. It's the one area that I, well, it's one of the many areas, but it's probably the primary area where I felt was a strength. We always knew when you all were headed to Annapolis, what meetings you were going to be at. And we also were extended an invitation to be present at, at those meetings as well, when it was appropriate to do so. And I just want to challenge my team, and as an administration, it's going to be the ask that we move forward in that way, and that you all receive those same invitations. And so it was why I asked for this to be here, and I really actually am going to be quiet until there are questions, and I'm going to let Robin finish.
So the, okay, thanks. So then in terms of communication and support, definitely providing monthly legislative updates and sharing also information with the leadership, briefings with leadership and the board that related to any kind of evolving legislative dynamics, and then monitoring and the feedback, feedback loop, you know, collecting, collecting updates from chiefs on implementation progress and obstacles, and then stakeholder engagement, preparing parents, staff, and community partners for legislative advocacy as needed. Because many times, it's, it's really important to have those people behind, you know, behind us, because they can make a major impact with the legislators, as well as, I think it's, will be important to provide any feedback related to implementation of the bills that were passed this past year, especially obstacles, because that can help form our positions in terms of supporting or opposing for upcoming legislation that's coming through. So Cindy, can you can go to the next one, please? So as far as I- So as far as I, this is basically a timeline. Um, we would start off with having, uh, receiving, we have received quality of feedback. I know that, uh, Ms. McCray, she, um, has had opportunity to talk to different legislators relating to, uh, our engagement and our advocacy. And then of course, we have been planning, as you'll see, as we work through this process. Um, because there's a lot of behind the scenes internal planning, uh, but in terms of all the work that's related to this. And then we will be definitely scheduling meetings with the division chiefs. Um, and we'll meet with their departments to review the bills that have been passed. So I generally will, I, what I do is I take each bill and break it down and actually provide for them step by step what it is that needs to be done so that we're in compliance with any of the bills that passed. Uh, and that's just to support their work. And then, um, they'll, they will develop implementation plans in which they're going to discuss any challenges or opportunities in the preparation and establishment, establishing the implementation plans. Because sometimes because the bills pass so, so late in this, like they pass, like the, well, the super, the, um, uh, governor still has, I think, three more times that he'll be signing bills. And so then you're talking about mid to the end of the, of May before you, these, you know, for a fact, yep, there are going to be a bill. But they then are enacted and begin July one. So many of these things have to be in place July one. And that is oftentimes extremely challenging for our divisions. And then, uh, virtual legislative review session, uh, we intend to provide, which would host, we'd host it. Um, and it would be for any stakeholders within the community. Uh, with much of this information provided to them in terms of not, not specifically the implementation plans, but just the, um, the challenges and what we plan to do. So then if we go to the next page, it gives you the specific times, the dates, I should say. So as you can see, um, the first date is, um, Thursday, um, May eighth. And that will be, uh, a legislative exchange will be coming out of our office. This monthly, uh, newsletter detailing our bill position. So that'll talk about the bills that passed and what our positions were. And then, um, let's see, Bill, then Monday, the nineteenth, they will receive, um, all the requirements that they'll each have for the bills that pass that impact their divisions. Uh, and then it's for them to get that by the nineteenth. And then by the thirtieth, they will begin to, uh, developing implementation, uh, plans for each of their divisions. And then if you go to the next page, Cindy.
Well, Robin, can, can Chairman, one comment? I know we're on.
Yes, please.
Time. Uh, I just want to emphasize the importance of, if we go back one slide, Cindy. Uh, no, I'm sorry, the next one. Yeah, the implementation plans and requirements for each bill. One of the things that came back, um, from my colleagues this year is often, um, sometimes there's this like, this like unknown of when exactly, um, prior legislation, like what's the due date? By when does this need to be implemented? In some cases, Robin, correct me if I'm wrong. I think there's one that's like an early, an early summer implementation, like prior to the start of the school year. And what has been challenging for chiefs is to understand, hey, is this just by fall or by the start of the school year? Or is there a particular date? And so, um, Robin and Shelby did a really great job of meeting with chiefs last year, but it was a piece of feedback that they provided. Um, and I think streamlining those processes are going to help, um, for us to be able to speak to our legislators and say, uh, as we get ready to approach the next legislative session, here is what the implementation for this bill, this bill and this bill have actually looked like with our division chiefs and how it's been rolled out across our school system.
Well, and actually you're correct. The majority of the bills are actually need to be, um, they, they're enacted July one, so they go into effect. So we're supposed to have things in place by then. Okay, Cindy, if you can scroll to the next one. Oh, I now reshared that, so I guess we're going to the next one. Okay, so then the pre, so then we're moving into the, um, 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 pre-session. Oh, did I, this isn't, no, that, I'm sorry, we must have missed this one. So then, um, um, May ninth, that's when I, no, I did share this, didn't I, Cindy? Where are you? Did you jump back? Okay.
Oh, you got to go back one. You didn't do the June ninth one back one, that, that.
Okay, oh, there we are. Okay, thank you.
This is worth developing them.
So, right, thank you. So June ninth, so this one, uh, what we did last year and we will continue to do is we set up meetings starting beginning of June with this, with the division chiefs. And we sit down, talk to them about their legislative priorities from their perspective, as well as any of the results, what's, uh, what, um, Chief Boyd just said in terms of newly passed bills and what those, what are issues related to. There's the impact operations and instruction and budget. And then we're also going to look at the unpassed bills from this past session because there were a lot of bills that did not pass this legislative session. And there's a high probability that they could be coming back to us in the next session. And so it's really important to get their feedback, uh, and work with them on that to, because that'll help formulate what our positions will be. And of course, during, this summertime, of course, is time when people also take leave for the summer, you know, to, you know, they're taking their breaks and stuff. So we'll work around that and work through this summer to get that information. And in addition to that, we want to also, uh, by June seventh, sent out a legislative priority survey to, to the board, to all of you, the board members for your inputs so that we, because there may be things that you are feel really, you know, these are important things that we should be addressing so that we can upfront, uh, put that information into the legislative platform. So you, you will be receiving a survey, uh, related to the, um, what your priorities are for the, for the platform. And then if you scroll to the next one. And then as far as August.
Ms. Welsh, I believe, oh, Chief Boyd had her hand up, or maybe she was letting it down from previously, I'm sorry.
You know, I'm a bad student. I just, if we could go back just really quickly, um, two things I want to mention here. Number one, um, when we, when Robin and Shelby start to engage with our division chiefs around, hey, what are some of the priorities, uh, that might be important for legislative session? I know maybe it's charter schools, maybe it's immunizations, maybe it's, um, something around curricula. Um, those priorities are always going to be aligned on our side, at least, um, to the superintendent's sort of strategic vision for our school system. And right now, we are in the process of working with our strategic planning team to determine what our next strategic plan is going to look like. And so I just wanted to say this year in particular is going to be a really unique year as we sort of plan, uh, because we're in this space and place of planning for the future. And we want to make sure that, um, it is collaborative and it aligns with what the board's vision and the board's priorities are. Um, and so I just wanted to name that there. The second thing that I wanted to name is that, uh, we list this as a survey. I think in year one, um, uh, Dr. Fields, who, um, was leading this, this committee at that time, um, I think it was a survey, but it doesn't need to be that. It can come in the form in which the board feels like it's going to be easiest to provide feedback. If that's a document that ultimately ends up being redlined, we're, I mean, we'll, we'll adapt to whatever the board's, um, preferences and providing that feedback.
Okay, Cindy, you can move forward to the next one. Um, so then, um, by August first, um, we, uh, are working to have a draft legislative, the draft legislative, uh, platform completed. Uh, and at that point, we will be incorporating everyone, all stakeholders input. Um, and it'll include analysis of current laws and emerging needs. So then, um, by, uh, August twenty-fifth, the platform will be finalized. Um, um, and again, the draft is based on the additional input and review. But the important thing in August, I think, which is critical, and I have spoken to Cindy about this, is that it will be really important that the dates of the Policy and Governance Committee is prior to the first August board meeting. Because in that first August Policy and Governance Committee meeting, that will be the opportunity for all of you to, um, you know, provide your feedback, make any revisions, um, you know, do whatever. And I, I don't know if you recall, but back when we did it last year, I know, and, and Board Member Walker, Board Member Boozer Strutter and, and Briggs, all of you were there and you provided a lot of feedback, which we made some extensive revisions to the platform to incorporate your, your inputs. So, and we want to make sure we have the opportunity to do that. But then, um, be able to move that, uh, platform then to the full board for their consideration and vote because they need to approve it, um, at their first August meeting. Because if you move forward, if you go to the next slide, Cindy, um, on September twelfth will be legislative day. So we have to have the platform, uh, uh, you know, approved and voted on by the board for that date because that's what's driving much of the conversation with the legislators, um, at, when legislative day occurs. And then during the months of September through November, that's a critical time to have pre-session meetings with targeted state delegates and senators. Um, first of all, to have the opportunity to approve the platform because they reached out a lot last year asking, what's our thoughts about this? Or what's that? Or, you know, they wanted to know the information because that's the time where a lot of times they'll go and have their bills, um, um, you know, developed by DLS. Um, and then, uh, we will, we'll build support and get, you know, answer their questions. A lot of times they have lots of questions related to certain aspects of the school system. And then we can identify bill sponsors and legislative allies as we move forward in the legislative session. And then in the wintertime, say, uh, December to January, um, we, um, begin meetings in, with, in the offices with delegates and senators regarding introduced bills. And I don't remember if you recall, but back in December last year, we had a lot of pre-filed bills. Um, and so it's, uh, those conversations really do start, um, in the beginning of, uh, December. Um, and then February eleventh would be advocacy day, which we would like, um, we're hoping that that, I don't, I don't know the date of crossover yet at this point for next year, but this would be, our goal was to have it before the crossover this time. Um, oh, I'm sorry, Chief Boyd?
Yep, one quick overlay, um, for the fall, the legislative meetings. Um, Shelby and Robin, um, are going to coordinate those, um, in a way that is by legislative and by board district. And so I just want to name, though it's not, uh, I don't see that it's listed here, is that this is another one of those collaborative opportunities where, um, we can't do this without the board. Um, because we do want to be able to ensure that the board member representing District Twenty-One of the Legislative District is present. Um, we will also at these same meetings invite, um, quote unquote, the expert. Um, so we will have chiefs available for those pre-coordinated meetings.
Um, Cindy, can you scroll to the next one? And so then we also just wanted to remind you, and I know we had shared this with you last year, but we do have the legislative toolkit, um, which has, you know, that like lists out many different things that in terms of legislative priorities, uh, the legislative maps, uh, that they have position templates, te- testimony tips, the legislative newsletters, just a wide variety of things that you can see. And then if you go to the next, the next slide, it, um, I think there's one after that.
I'm happy to overlay, it's just a picture.
Um. I don't know, is that all you have, Cindy?
It's okay, she might have dropped off, but for the community watching, for the committee, um, it, it's basically just a pic, there's another slide that shows the legislative platform. Again, another collaborative opportunity, but what's important there is that, um, we just want to make sure if it is the will of the board, that there's an opportunity for us to, um, begin that legislative platform with a joint letter, uh, that would come from the superintendent, um, from the chair of the board and from the chair of the Policy and Governance Committee. Uh, so, um, you know, ultimately, obviously, that's, we'll have to begin that process. But I'm just wanted to name, um, that I think that that piece was really well received and so we hope to be able to continue that.
And I believe that was the last slide.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you, Ms. Welsh and Chief Boyd for all of your work on this. Um, this is super great. So I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues and see if they have any questions. But I, I just can't thank you all enough for your collaboration over the last few days to get us to this point to be able to have a comprehensive plan. And I'm sure my colleagues have thoughts, um, and I know I'm not over, over talking here, but I know Board Member Boozer Strutter is happy to see advocacy day already planned, uh, for the spring. Um, so, um, I mean, this year she pushed really hard for us to do it and bring our students. So, um, I think that's been a priority ever since you've been on the board. So I know you're excited about it. So I'll let the folks here ask questions, uh, give feedback. Um, I, I don't know who wants to go first, but if you raise your hand, I'll call you. Board Member Walker, how did I know?
Awesome. Can we put back up the slide for, first thanks to you guys. Um, you know, we get better every single year. We get more granular, it's only improving. So thank you so much. If we can go back to the slide with the timeline, please, um, the one that has it in, um, written form, not the graph. Well, I, I can talk to it. So, um, only because I don't see it shared, but.
Just a heads up, colleagues, Cindy's computer is like freezing and not, so if you, if you don't.
No worries. Okay, I remember, um, PG CPS advocacy day. I haven't talked to my colleagues on this, but I've, I believe that we should move that up. And the reason why I say that for consideration is that we know that decisions get made way before, um, the end of the term. Therefore, I think it would behoove us to have our students be able to talk to our priorities intelligently, but also with some influence. Because at the end, at crossover, I just think it's a little, it's a little late. That's, that's my own input, um, to be honest. I don't know how my colleagues feel about that. That's for consideration. The secondary piece, um, is still coming up. No, not that one, the, um, it's in written format, there's no graphs on it.
Do you think it should be before February the eleventh, the date that we have on there?
Yeah, this is the one. Um, I do, oh, no, this is, go to the next page of this one, the one that says PG CPS. Yeah, I think it should be before February eleventh. I mean, cross, that is crossover, but I feel like so many things are already done. So what happens in my, in my short estimation is that because something was already approved, then usually it gets approved, it's not a lot of pushback on, on a bill at that particular time. It's got to be something major for there to be pushed back if it's already passed from one of the houses. And we saw that with this major bill with, uh, four twenty-nine. But typically what we see is that a lot of the advocacy is done upfront in whatever house it starts. And therefore that's where the decisions get made. That's just what I've seen, um, colleagues. I would love your input. So that was one. And then the other piece, um, was the September, you know, I'm a fan of legislative day in September. Yes, yes, and yes, thank you. Um, the September through November timeframe, yep. The share the board approved platform, I'm all in to share it early and then continue talking to it. And the last piece I'll say is, I think it's really imperative for the board to have specific talking points, um, in focus areas. And of the PG CPS platform that we already are going to align to. The reason for that is because what we've learned is that when we get in front of our legislators, it's hard to give them twenty topics. We've really got to focus our energy and our time on the three to five specific ones that we want them to peer their ears and eyes on. And then of course, the advocates inside of the government relations is going to be all over all of the other ones with their own relationships anyway. Um, so that, those are my inputs for our considerations as we move forward with us. Thanks.
Your Board Member Walker, um, do any other colleagues have comments? I, I've got one consideration that really does, wasn't my idea, I'm shocked she didn't say it. Board Member Walker and I were having a conversation and I actually supported somewhere in this timeline, if we could, um, you know, make room for the board to develop a particular bill for this year, so we have our own bill. I know. Yeah, how did you forget that one? The, that little September, right after that timeline where we're doing, working out, right now, it looks like we're just going to be responding to what they're doing. If we could be proactive with our own proposals, I know that word is not there, but if we could be proactive with our own proposals, I think that would be good there. But that's the only, it wasn't my idea, I borrowed it from Board Member Walker. Um, so I, I just thought it would, would be good to highlight.
Yeah, I love it.
And, and the final piece is, you know, last year we kind of had, and I actually talked to Board Member Walker a little bit about this, having talked to my other colleagues about it. We kind of had two documents, it would be good if we, you know, we just had one, but we had a strong letter on the inside of ours that says, these are the, back to her point around talking points. I think that will be, uh, really good for us to, you know, really have a strong presence inside of there. Maybe a letter inside of that booklet that's like twenty pages with all the committee members' names on it, like these are the ideas we support. Just because we don't run into, you know, we had some issues this year where people thought just one board member was supporting something when we all were on the same page about it. So as much as we can, you know, rubber stamp, um, you know, the board's priorities, I think that'll be good. And I'm over talking now, so I'll turn it over to my colleague, uh, Board Member Boozer Strutter.
Yeah, thank you so much and thank you all for the, the hard work on this. I really appreciate it. Um, I, I think in terms of the lobbying night, I, I think I, I think I am, I am a little more comfortable with later because my memory of the, when May, May, we go as May, or we went. Because my memory of the, when May, we go as May, we went early this year, it was Monday, February 3rd. And it just felt too early, we went to have meetings with legislators and they hadn't even read bills yet. And, you know, there, it didn't feel like there was much traction in in movement. I feel like it could be a step along the way, so if we could, if we commit to when May, when we're there for Mayb again. In the timeline, and maybe it'll be earlier to get the ball rolling. But I felt like things really took off after that February 12th hearing. So, so I just wanted to put out that I think we need multiple touchpoints, but for the advocacy night. I feel like some bills, you just start to know the ones that aren't gonna cross the finish line. Let's wait a little, let's wait a little while as the Mayb Legislative Committee meets, as we meet. And then go in for advocacy on what's viable. So I, I'm okay with a little later date, I just want to remind everyone that we have many ways to show up. And the Mayb event is one useful way.
So I just, if I can respond to that, Chairman, I just want to say, that's great. And the good thing about this, so, you know, sometimes it's a challenge to plan so far ahead. There's like this fear of people are gonna be too busy, but guess what? We have the dates and they're tentative, and we can change them if Strong Schools Maryland comes out and has, or Mayb has. A date that they come out with and we learn about it in October. We can, you know, we can be flexible on these dates. And certainly, Board Member Boozer Strutter, we can lean on to the recommendation that both you and Board Member Walker have. So we're not at all tied or married to these dates, we just wanted to get something on paper. Which is what we were charged with, and I think it's gonna be healthy, and we can be flexible.
I just wanted to, I I would be doing a disservice if I didn't do this. Tim Meyer, I don't know if he talked to you about this, Board Member Boozer Strutter, but he talked to me about this last night. And I'm thinking about a conversation Board Member Walker had with me and an email I read. Tim asked me about training parents to go to, and I know y'all said train them, y'all actually have a slide on it. I think it might be a happy medium to take Tim's idea, what you all have, Board Member Walker's idea, and maybe PCAT. Have a day in Indianapolis and y'all do the train, because y'all already got a slide saying it. Tim has already agreed, like he came up to me and he was like, hey, I want to train all the parents to do what I do. And for those of you who are watching, you know what Tim does, he does the Tim thing, the Tim Obama thing, and gets people excited. So maybe a happy medium is to leave it, the advocacy day where it later, and then bring our parents in a bit earlier. I know the PCAT folks and Board Member Walker have been thinking about how to deepen their engagement. So I'm just curious if that might be a solution, as podged everybody's ideas coming to one place.
Yeah, I think, I see Board Member Walker has their hand up, but I think that's just another opportunity to collaborate and lead. And it's a missed opportunity not to bring parents, you all had parents, and a Board Member Walker had parents on the Advocacy Day. And even they were asking, like, how do, how do other people get here with me? So I would support that and.
Yeah, I'm a fan, I'm a fan, so I do think that leaving it at that later date works if we're doing the training in advance. So bringing in exactly who you just talked about, and then that way we can get the community there. And we have representation from all of the districts. Or the opportunity in advance to have representation from all of the districts, because that's always a question. And because we have this so far in advance, we can really do the planning accordingly and give that to the parent groups. So that they go off and they run with that, which you all support, and then we'll be ready. So I am aligned with that, I think we do need specific asks. What I realized is that, I I think it was because of the governor's bill that it was just so compacted. But I remember being there for the Advocacy Day, and I remember some of the legislators saying, this is really good. If the goal is to get them exposed to legislators, which is only one piece of a goal, right? The other part is for them to be able to talk intelligently about it, yep, check that box. But to influence it and to change people's minds about it, in my estimation, it was a little late. But I'm okay with having two of the three done, and then we work for progression up until the influence part. And I think when we have more parents talking it, that can help with the influence and the impact as well, so perfect, I'm in.
Ms. Welsh had her hand up too, so Chief Boyd and Ms. Welsh, if, I don't know which order.
I'll yield it to my team, my colleague first, go ahead, Robin.
I just wanted to say, the idea of training the parents on how to advocate, I do advocate, I do think that the parents in PCAT would be very interested in that. That in this past year, when we met each month, I would update them on what was going on with the legislation and what we supported and opposed. And they were like, how can we help, how can we help? So I really think providing them some opportunity for training in that area and opening that avenue for them. I think they'd be very excited to do that.
Yeah, I'll just echo that, I think we inform to transform, and the goal is exposure, but it's also to to have an impact. I think, you know, people are excited about the way that we as a collective, our board, our administration, our students, more importantly. Showed up, and I think we only get better from here. So I just want to acknowledge the fact that while this isn't, doesn't have a detail for detail, I'm in this timeline and in this plan. We're also being mindful of expanding that exposure to others, to students across our district. And I know we couldn't take everyone this year, but we're gonna be mindful of sharing that interest form really early. And ensuring that parents from across all of our online districts, our Peaggrass students. And otherwise, know that we're going, know when we're going, know what we're doing, and have an opportunity to sign up. If it's if it's something that they think they'd like to do.
All right, well, I appreciate you all coming and bringing this. Colleagues, I do want to encourage you to continue to send your feedback to them offline. But again, thank you all so much for doing this, you know, this is really important to the committee. And thank you all for having a robust plan that we can, you know, point to, and just, I just can't say thank you enough for your leadership in this. And we look forward to continue moving together as we think about our legislative advocacy work. All right, colleagues, I'm gonna move to policies for second consideration that are moving to public comment. That's Policy 0124, the E-Rate Policy, Policy 3120 Debt Management. Policy 4135 Activities, Organizations, Political. Policy 5150 Student Involvement Rights and Responsibility. The question is, shall the committee release the policies under Agenda Items 5.1 through 5.4 for public comment? Is there any discussion? All right, if there is no discussion, Ms. Adley, will you please call the role for the aforementioned policies?
Committee Chair Moss, I think there are questions from staff.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see the hands.
That's okay, I'll call the role, and then we still have to cover Policy 4.2 and 4.4.
Oh, I skipped two, thank you for the flag, if we could take care of these, I think those, and then those would be the last.
Dr. Moss?
Hi.
Mr. Graves?
Hi.
Ms. Boozer Strutter?
Hi.
Ms. Walker?
Hi.
Those policies pass and they move for for public comment. So Items 5.1 through 5.4 will be released for public comment. All right, so I did skip Policy 011, the Sustainability Plan. So the Chair recognizes Ms. Welsh should provide an overview of Policy 0111.
Thank you, so the Sustainability Plan, which actually, so what I did was, I shared this policy. Without the revisions at this point with the with the Sustainability and Resilience Department. And had a very healthy conversation about what was in this policy. Because of course, they're quite an interesting group of staff, because they're highly motivated and very much advocates for. For for the climate, you know, the Climate Action Plan, and have been highly engaged with that. And they kept referring me to Board Member Boozer Strutter. And that she would be the person that would know all this information and be, you know, extremely involved with this. And I said, I know she, it has been extremely important to her, but you have been so active in that Climate Action Plan Committee. And they, they're so pleased with that kind of support. So anyway, these changes are really changes that they asked to have incorporated into, based on their experience. Says this is a very new department, and it is, was developed as a result of the Climate Action Plan change, Plan. And because originally, we had language about having a committee and everything. And then there was a decision to decide to have a sustainability. Department, and really, there's so many pieces to the, to the action plan, first of all, and it's so broad and comprehensive. That you really, if you're serious about it as a school system, you really do need to devote staff to be very focused on this. Because if not, it's very easy for these things to get lost in the process. So the, in the policy statement, they also felt was important to add the importance of healthy environment to achieve equity and excellence in learning. And prioritizing our students, the Prince George's County Public Schools has managed to incorporate cost-effective solutions to create healthy places to learn for all students. By reducing the energy used of buildings, reducing waste and transportation. And then the board is committed to high-level goals for reducing its carbon footprint by generating new renewable energy sources. And then it goes on, which is just the same, but these were changes that they felt were critically important. And then Cindy, if you'll scroll down. And as far as the purpose, to integrate best practices and lessons learned from Prince George's County, the county, because they're the ones that initiated this. And to implement a sustainability policy for PG CPS, so that was just some small language changes there. And then if you scroll down a little bit further. See. So this is, this is, this, Maryland Green School was there. But this is, this is actually, the definition has been changed. So that it's it's very clear about what the Maryland's Green Schools are about. I think previously, the definition had more history related to it than what actually is the Maryland Green School. And what it is, it provides educational opportunities that empower pre-K to 12th grade students to take action to reduce environmental impact practice. And encourage environmental stewardship and sustainability, fosters environmental literacy, increases awareness of the impact of the environment. Of the, of public health, and then there's a little bit about the the history. And then the fact that schools that meet these different requirements, they do receive Maryland Green School Awards. And are basically labeled as a green school, which is, is really an important thing for a school to be, to have. So then if you scroll down further. And then the definition of sustainability, that that's been changed so that it says a responsible management of natural resources to fulfill current needs. Without compromising the ability of future generations to meet theirs. It aims to balance ecology, ecological, economic, and social goals such as reducing carbon emissions, promoting renewable energy. And, let me scroll down Cindy. Ensuring, ah, where did you go, ensuring equitable resource access. And then resilience was added, involves proactively preparing for and adapting to impacts of climate change. Including extreme weather events while maintaining a safe, effective learning environment for students and staff. And then if you scroll down further. So these, they felt that this was important as far as managing energy. By establishing robust district-wide energy data collection to accurately benchmark and calculate greenhouse gas emissions. And I do know that previously, because it actually showed up in the last OLA audit, that there was not, there was, there was. No real effort in place to really. Collect energy data and really measure it and compare from year to year and improve in that particular area. So this is, this is a really important aspect of the entire program. And then relying on building automation to achieve desirable energy use intensity targets. And that's important too, because if you don't, if you are able to automate that whole process of energy use. Then you don't have teachers, you know, or staff, or even office people yanking the temperature up or down, depending on how they feel. Because that can be a big waste of energy. And then leveraging metering technology for accurate data, data management and performance tracking. And that has been a goal that has been in place in terms of really being able to track our energy use. So then, in this last one, perform comprehensive energy audits on existing building. The language that was there previously was electricity. And instead, I felt strongly that electricity was very limiting. And that what it really should be saying is district-wide energy and use. And then including metrics on total energy use, and then, because then you're looking at everything that we consume to have energy. And then percentage of annual energy consumption derived from renewable sources, so that was another change. And then if you scroll down further. And then this was in addition, reduce harmful indoor air quality traits such as mold, lead pipes. Little to no air conditioning that impacts the learning ability and health of students, especially in disadvantaged communities. And I think that's very important, and we've many times heard in public comments at the board. And in board meetings where parents have been quite upset by related to air quality in certain schools. So I think that is an important part of this policy to ensure that the board is saying. That we, we have to make sure that we are not having indoor air quality that is harmful. And then if you scroll down further. Okay, so this, again, there was electricity there, announces to contract for new renewable energy. To procure what cannot be produced on PG properties and prioritize reducing solid waste sent to the landfill. I will tell you that we have, so they, we just revised, this past year, we revised the recycling po, administrative procedure. And we just, they just finalized the. Administrative procedure on reducing, like elimination of waste, waste, wasteful food. So there's a whole plan and administrative procedure where, when kids are not eating their food, and previously it would get thrown into the trash. And that's what ends up in the landfills. Instead, if it has, if it's products that have not been opened and everything, this administrative procedure actually talks about setting up another table. That other students may utilize, you know, have the food, and in an effort to really not waste food. So, which will be, I think, helpful, because I think we do throw away a lot of food every day. So I think that'll be extremely helpful. And then this, they did add on, in addition to maximize all EM power. Maryland rebates to also take advantage of any grants that are out there and other available funding sources. And then if you scroll down further. And then the last one, it, so this one has to do with implementation responsibilities. Oh, and so if you looked at it a little bit before there, this is language that was there before. It talks about that this policy should be reviewed every two years. And that's because of the action plan, which has very specific goals broken out by all the different years. So I think it's really important that there, as we move forward, there may be things that we feel, that you all feel that need to be changed in the policy. To reflect what changes have occurred because of the action plan. And then the last piece is that instead of the actual Sustainable Steering Committee. That this, the Superintendent will establish a department to integrate sustainability and business operations throughout the district. And implement, monitor, and evaluate the priority goals of the PG CPS Climate Change Action Plan. So, I mean, it's sort of like putting your, your. Money up front there in terms of this, we're committed to this, and we're, we're having staff now that are dedicated to just this work. So I think that is extremely important in the process, so those were the changes to the policy.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh, colleagues, I do want to let you know, this is, is going to be the last measure we take up. Ms. Adley, we're gonna have to move that last policy to the next board meeting, we're gonna lose a colleague. And so the telehealth policy will have to come up on May 29th. But I I do want to see if the, if the committee has any questions or comments around this policy, so I do want to open the floor. Board Member Boozer Strutter?
Oh yeah, just a big thank you, seeing all the Climate Change Action Plan work moving over to policy has been great. And definitely, I appreciate the shout-outs in some of the areas. I did just want to note that this policy reinforces that we, as a system, should really dig in. On the National School Boards Association Magna Awards this year. If you noted, the the Go Green Initiative on indoor air quality, which is a, which is basically. It's not a competing with the other districts, it's that we all are competing against a, a process or a plan to improve air quality. And that is the. And that is the Magna Awards this year. And I think PG CPS, obviously, we've been a leader in so many ways. And I think we can really help promote that initiative and and of course, you know, do what we need to do to also win win the award. So I just wanted to note that, you know, you know, for a lot of school districts, they don't have policies like this. And it will not be prioritized in the Go Green Initiative and the Magna Award may not even resonate, which is unfortunate. It's something that I noted at the conference. So I just want to say how grateful I am that that we in these last years have really moved to stronger policy on on all of these climate action issues and particularly this indoor air quality issue, because there's so much data and evidence that this is where we we can show the academic how it impacts academics. So thank thank you. I guess it was more of a statement than a question tonight. Thanks.
You do you get to do that, given all of your work on this. So we not only do we thank the board for advancing policy, but your advocacy around it. I'm so shocked you didn't talk about the summit last week that you all had with with students and leaders and parents all across the district. So thank you for your work and advocacy around it. I saw all the social media posts. And so we certainly are moving in the right direction. And so much research around what how air quality impacts math and reading scores. So thank you for pushing us in that direction. Looks like there are no more comments or questions from my colleagues. Ms. Adley, will you please take the roll call to advance this policy for public comment?
Dr. Moss.
Hi.
Mr. Graves.
Hi.
Ms. Boozer Strutter.
Hi.
Ms. Walker.
Hi.
For you, committee.
This this moves this policy moves to public comment. We'll take up the telehealth policy at our May May twenty ninth meeting. There are no policies for third consideration first read of the board. At this time, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. The chair informs the public that the next Virtual Policy and Governance Committee meeting will be on May thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Please continue to check the Prince George's County Board of Education website for meeting information and updates. Oh, Ms. Welsh, did I forget something?
I just I want to let you know, it's it's just because we've changed that agenda around so many times that the sustainability was actually up for discussion. So it would be we can't go to public comment yet because I have to go to the action plan. You know, where it goes, so the superintendent and O G C. The sponsor, I know I don't know your exact words you always say about the sponsor, but that's really what it should be versus public comment.
Oh, maybe I misread. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. Oh, it was under. Okay, I got you. This is my fault. This is the sponsor revision. So this has been approved. Colleagues, if you all are okay with that, understanding that's what your vote was for. We don't have to revote again if you all understand that's what your vote was for. Thank you, Ms. Welsh. I'll start over. Please continue to check the Prince George's County Board of Education website for meeting information. Thank you all for a great discussions and attendance to our viewers. Thank you for watching. There being no further business, the time is now seven seventeen. The April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five Policy and Governance Committee meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Hey.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry, y'all, that I messed it up at the end, but.